Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 11th, 2025, correct? My agenda says 24. Did you all pick up on that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Threw me for a loop there for a minute, yeah. I double-checked my sanity for a minute. So, June 11th, 2025. Actually, today is the 10th.
It is the 10th.
2025, okay. We're starting off on a great, great start today.
This is the bill, yeah.
Who can tell us the end of the year? It is definitely the end of the year. All righty, so, welcome to the school committee meeting on June 10th, 2025. I call the meeting to order at 7:30.
No, this is the wrong, hold on, this is the wrong agenda. No. Yeah, it is.
Is the information correct?
It says 25 in the agenda.
No, it's right.
Yeah, I feel like it's right.
It's partially, part of my agenda items are from last year.
Wow.
Oh, we're gonna get a letter from somebody.
It's different from the one that's in the packet.
Yeah.
The one that you just gave me.
I'll go by the one in the packet, I guess.
She just copied different parts from different.
Let's, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll figure it out as we go, shall we? But it could all rise, that'll be great.
That one's right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, thank you.
Is that right?
Okay, let me get back to the.
Okay.
Shall we just continue with presentations? Can we start with that at least?
SAC.
I mean, the packet looks pretty right.
Yeah.
All righty, so, we called the means order, Pledge of Allegiance, now we're on to presentations. So, presentation for the Marlborough High School Student Advisory Committee. So, if you all wanna come on up?
Come on down.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Jade Onyango and I'm the freshman SAC representative for the class of 2028. Tonight, I'm gonna be presenting on the topic of physical education requirements at MHS. At high schools in Massachusetts, we are required to take four semesters of gym. Typically, students take one each year. More specifically, we are required to fulfill certain health and physical education curriculum. But this year, both myself and other students were faced with a scheduling conflict. Due to other electives, gym wasn't able to fit in our schedules. And now, students are dropping music and limiting themselves from taking business or art electives because they need to get gym credits. Yes, we have summer gym, which is a great alternative that we have, and we are so lucky to have a staff member to run it. But many students work or have other family commitments and aren't able to take part in summer gym. This sets the tone for the rest of their high school schedules and classes we can and can't take. It's just difficult to fit everything in. I talked to guidance and they explained the complexity of scheduling. It's a big puzzle that has been carefully put together for each grade. So, after talking to both my peers and guidance, I did some research on what some other schools and students are doing regarding gym and physical education. Some schools offer after-school programs and clubs that center on fitness and health that allow students to knock out some of the credits. Others offer online courses as well. Even if this doesn't knock out all the requirements, it could minimize the amount of time a student needs to attend summer school. Another way to knock out requirements is that some schools allow sports to count towards gym credits. Regular participation in sports gets students moving more and even being more physically active than they would be in a gym class. But I know that the state of Massachusetts has some specific restrictions on getting credits. But allowing extracurricular sports to count as credits depends on the district. Although the physical aspect of gym class isn't the only thing taught, the teachers focus on other subjects regarding personal health and fitness as well as other fundamental skills. Another solution would be to orient our fitness club in a way that would allow participating students to get their gym credits during the club meetings, which they spend in the gym, outside, or even in the fitness center. I know that this idea has a lot of logistics and that this is a problem that my peers have approached me with. As a SAC representative, it's my job to discuss the problems within the student body. Thank you for your time tonight and thank you so much for listening to my presentations over this past year. And if there are no other questions, have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, Jade.
Thank you, Jade.
Mrs. Hennessy's got a lot to say about this. This has been a big topic for many years, and we used to have sports waivers for gym credit, but I'm gonna pass it to you because this is your forte.
Well, I'm not gonna say it's my forte. I'm gonna say, Jade, this has been, we've gone around the block on this like multiple times. A number of years ago, a few superintendents ago, we went through this discussion because MasCor has certain specific requirements, as you were starting to mention about the, you know, needing to have everything once a year and such. It is something that I think we need to take a look about how can we create flexibility to support our students and meet the needs of MasCor. And I think that that's why we do have that ability where there can be discussions with the principal and the superintendent about how to potentially work something out. There've been opportunities of having gym classes, I believe, over the summer.
Yeah, well, she said that.
Not anymore. Okay, well, previously.
Do you not have, you said we do have summer?
We do still have summer gym, but I know some students just aren't able to attend because it's, I believe it's like July 1st through August 1st, and it's like.
We were talking about it this morning.
Eight to one. And I know some kids who have work or just family commitments, like traveling, that has been scheduled months and months in advance, just can't get out of it and just ended up not being able to attend. And then, my other thing was, I did hear from some students that they had talked to their guidance counselors and had gotten, like, I don't know if permission makes sense, but allowed, like, allowed them to count their sports towards gym credits. But I didn't really look too far into that because I had initially been under the impression that they didn't count.
So, Jade, I'm gonna say this. How about, how about, let's make an agreement that we're gonna need to have a conversation with our new interim superintendent, Jason, that's here tonight and is gonna get introduced. And the new high school principal wants that person's name so that we can, how about, have a, have a new, fresh start on this discussion. Because your points are well taken, exceptionally valid, and I think all of us have the same goal of wanting to make sure that we're hitting the, the health and nutrition and wellness overall needs. But there may be some ways of kind of splitting hairs and making sure that we're doing it correctly. We're not the only school district that's facing this in Massachusetts, so.
And it isn't, and it's our goal to make sure that kids aren't not doing other things because they have to fulfill their gym credit, so, yeah. Will you work with us on it?
Yes, of course. Okay. Thank you. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jade.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hadley Hawes and I'm the junior class representative on the Student Advisory Committee. It has been an amazing year where all of the other representatives and I have spoken about meaningful topics to our school. It has been an honor to represent my class in this role, and I know the next speaker will do just as well. But before I start my topic officially, I would like to update you on one of my previous topics, which was the immigration mandate updates. As of now, the raids that ICE have been holding have been worse than when I originally spoke. Multiple instances from Massachusetts, including Milford student Marcelo Gomez de Silva and a young Worcester girl, have become national news stories highlighting the need for its action. And while it is not my topic tonight, I believe that more should be done on this to protect the students in our school, especially going into the summer. But now, my official topic, which is accessibility and signing up for athletics. At the end of every school year begins the summer practices and excitedly signing up for upcoming fall sports. What should be an exciting time often becomes stressful, all because of signing up. Through the many tabs and filling out redundant information, it is a struggle, to say the least. It is much harder, however, for students and families with little English. I know my own family fights with the websites every time my brother and I are signing up for sports. And for a parent or child signing up with little knowledge of English, it is exponentially more difficult. One story I heard was an English-speaking student describing how to sign up for sports on the phone with his bilingual friend, who is relaying the information to a Spanish-speaking mother who is filling out the forms. While we do have our struggles, Marlborough is one of the more inclusive schools in regards to accessibility to sports. Sports at the middle and high school are free to everyone, and there are also some opportunities where the school can financially support students to buy gear for their sport. This helps so many families who might not have been able to afford to play sports at other schools. However, this is not widely known and there is still a stigma around taking this opportunity, which creates a lack of utilization. And some, not all, of the pages of signing up for sports are able to be translated in a variety of languages, which is also helpful. Marlborough does many things right, but there is also a chance for confusion in the signup process. Some parts of the signup are unable to be translated or are worded confusingly, so when translated, it might cause distress. In talking about this to Athletic Director Radzinski in the 2025 to the 2026 school year and hopefully beyond, there will be a night where translators will be available to help parents to sign up their students for sports. These events will happen at the start of the fall, winter, and spring season to give equal opportunity for students all year round. There will also be a continuation of flyers on how to sign up for sports translated in Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole to help families who might not be able to come to that evening. This is all in hopes that all sports will gain numbers, especially those that lack of greater attendance. Athletics are a privilege to have, and so many families right now are not able to access it. I hope that translation and support for families speaking all languages will be able to be started and continued as long as possible and can help as many students that want to play sports as it possibly can. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Hadley. Sorry you're not coming back.
I was just gonna say, thank you for bringing that forward because I thought that our website had the tab to translate, and I actually was doing it while you were speaking. It doesn't translate that page. I did not, I did not know that.
So, I'm also gonna guess, if I can, a little bit, is, I believe, when we, Arbiter kind of took over everything and.
Do you wanna just tell people what Arbiter is?
Yeah, Arbiter is, is basically a company that handles a lot of the sports scheduling, planning, management, and it's not just here in Massachusetts, it's nationwide. So, it's kind of like a, an IT product, I guess, if you will, that has kind of taken over. And so, I hear you, because I, as an umpire, have issues with sometimes how they work. And I would say, they're not the most flexible business to work with. So, I think your concern, though, is even more valid that we need to do something sooner rather than later. Because for fall sports, as you all that participate and have participated know, things start over the summer. And if you, you know, haven't signed up or aren't aware of it, you're not gonna know that you need to start showing up sooner rather than later. So, maybe it is something that we need to see if the last few days here before the end of the school year, there can be an announcement so that maybe at minimum, there can be a listing of kids' names or something that can go to, through RUDs to get help. But you're, you're right, Hadley, that's, that's a major issue.
I will say, there was a sports meeting at the end of the school day today at about 2:00. That was a fall sports meeting, so you talk to the coaches of every sport, and it drew a great attendance. I mean, for the soccer team alone, there were about 30 more kids than the soccer team has ever seen. However, a lot of them, English was not their main language, and they kind of had to figure out how to sign up either today, in the middle of the cafeteria, or they would have to go home and try to figure it out with their families, which is also really hard to do.
Mary, so, the ARPOC, the, is that not available to families if they need?
Well, the ARPOC is for registration of school, yes.
Only registration.
We have translators, but that is what was spoken of, of like attending nighttime events.
Yeah.
And we have the translation devices, all one-on-one help, which we do for registration as well.
Daisy was being told that.
Yeah, and Daisy would need.
Well, no, ARPOC is the Registration Parent Center that's located in the middle school.
And, yes, in the.
For families that are registering their students to come in, but they're multilingual and they're super helpful.
Yeah.
And I just.
Daisy, who is the manager, would also need to be aware that this is an ongoing issue and to see if she could connect because there are translators in the ARPOC, but also in most of the schools as well. So, it would just be a matter of looking at their schedules and seeing who's available when.
Since this is obviously kind of like a hot ticket issue for like right now.
Yeah.
Is there a way that at minimum, we can get Dr. Riley kind of on the horn in the morning about finding some form of a solution so that we don't miss the opportunity? I mean, with what you're talking about, with the number of kids coming out, that's huge because just recently, we had numbers that were dwindling, specifically, I know, on soccer team. So, we don't wanna lose that opportunity and then miss those kids not knowing about the things that happened over the summer, which helps a lot with transitioning and feeling included as part of that team, you know, for tryouts. Any?
Are there other options other than the Arbiter to, like, no?
And, and I mean.
And so, we're forced into using that because I know the discussion was to look at alternatives because it's obviously not working for our community as well as it should.
It's, it's a problem. I mean, I had voiced it at the MIA level, but MIA doesn't push it out, and it's just something that, it's kind of taken over because.
Is like all of MidWatch uses it?
Oh, all across.
I know everybody uses it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you have to be using the same scheduling system, at least within the teams that you're playing against.
We did have a registration process, three to four years ago, I wanna say, previous to the Arbiter push. That was a different registration process, and that would have been something that could be translated because it was more similar. I guess my question would be, could we do something as simple as like at least a Google signup that allows that information to get in because that can be translated? And is something that Mike Lacer probably could, could help on working on that.
Our problem is that if our systems that are fully translatable connect to systems that are not.
Yeah.
Then you have a barrier for our families.
Yeah, of course. Good point.
Thank you. Hadley.
Thanks, Hadley.
And thanks for all your good work this year.
Yeah, we'll miss you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, school committee, and those who are here or watching at home. My name is Taylor Cronus and I'm the sophomore representative on SAC. Tonight, I'm going to be talking to you about something that was brought to my attention recently that left me, left me both a little shocked and also a little sad. After seeing my old literacy teacher at the grocery store of all places, she told me that the literacy program at the elementary school, or where, or the elementary schools where I went, Kane, is no longer in place and that those physical libraries themselves have been repurposed for other classes. When I was in elementary school, library or literacy was not most people's favorite special. Some kids found it boring. I even thought that from time to time, but that does not take away from the importance of the program. I recently just discussed with a friend how we remember choosing whether to read City of Ember or Tuck Everlasting as a class and how it was quite controversial. Allowing elementary schoolers to sit down and listen to a story for 20 to 30 minutes a day gives them a chance to relax and can also encourage these kids to pick up a book outside of the classroom. Speaking of students reading books outside of the classroom, Marlborough has students who come from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, and it can be hard for these students to access books outside of school. I remember students were able to browse around the many genres of books and they were able to pick a book and check it out. Some may say, why don't these kids just go to the public library? A student who works at the library shared with me that it can be hard for parents to bring their students to the library due to work and simply not having enough time in the day. Also, due to the library's hours, I find it hard as a student to get to the public library. Whatever the reason is, being able to offer books to students at school is a way that we can 100% sure that every student has access to literature. Lastly, the thing that saddened me the most when I found out the literacy program was taken away was that it meant the book fair would no longer be worked into the school day. I remember the excitement of having the book fair and having a special day at school. In elementary school, I remember Mrs. Ryan, to me, Emmy's mom, working so hard to put together many book fairs and make them fun for students and families. And one of my best memories is going to school with Emmy and helping set them up and take them down. My mom and I always enjoyed attending the family nights where we would buy books off the teacher's wish list. All the teachers in the school would create wish lists of books they wanted for their classroom, and if family could take out a slip for the book they wanted to buy, and it would be given to that teacher. Now, the book fair is after school and there's no more family night, and these teachers don't get to create those wish lists. Again, the time of the book fair can make it hard for families to access it, and it takes away from the fun of the experience. It is so important that we give arcade five students access to books that they can take home and allow them to build a foundation for their reading and writing skills. I know that this year, there were a lot of budgetary constraints, but I hope that bringing back the literacy program is something that could happen in the future and that we could give these students the same memorable experiences that myself and my peers once had. Thank you for your time and I hope you have a great rest of your evening. And also, I am stepping down from my role in SAC to pursue other leadership roles, but I am 100% confident that Maggie Morrissey, who I know some of you already met, will represent my class just as well. And I wanna thank you all for the work that you do in our district, and I hope you know it's so important, and I thank you for all the connections that you've given me, so. But if you have any questions, I'll take those now.
Okay, book fair lady, you gotta go too.
Well, you know, the book fair was my baby for like seven years, but I feel like part of the problem with the book fair is volunteers. I mean, not everybody is able to give a week and a half of their time. I mean, I lived there for a week and a half and there was a lot of prep to it. So, I find there's a lot more parents who are working and it's just that, that's the hard part. My understanding is they are still doing it a couple nights, different times of the year, it's just a more of a condensed option. I don't know much more than that, but they do, my understanding is they do still have that and that the, I'm sure the PTOs are still donating books back to the classroom.
Can I add to that too? Taylor, the library books are still at Kane School.
Are they?
They just spread out, so they're closer to each grade level, so students can freely come and grab them. They're just, the library space, all of our elementary schools don't have that space because they're classrooms now.
Yeah.
We're completely out of space, but the books are accessible to the students at any time. Part of the problem with the book fair as well, there is no safe place to set it up during the school day because I think Kane School only has the space outside the cafeteria and gym, and so many students go in and out of that during lunches that it can't be opened and accessible. It's going to be a struggle. But the plan is, and we've been talking, what will every library media center look like in our new school, in our new school and every school when it's returned after that building is built?
Taylor.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? The PTO has the, there's an all-city PTO, and I think your, your plea is on point, but really matches with what Ms. Ryan is really talking about. It really talks to the volunteers. So, if, whenever that first all-city PTO is gonna be early fall, I would suggest that you, as a student, go and speak about the need, right? And your experience and your hope, and kind of put it back onto the PTO to say, we need your help. Because they can step up and hopefully take on some responsibility to help and do it, just like Ms. Ryan and many others did. But maybe they don't really know that that really meant, meant that much, or it, you know, and I think sometimes hearing from a student really helps people to go, we need to get behind this, right? So, maybe that's a good thing to put on the calendar to figure out for early fall so that you can, you can speak to them.
Definitely, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like, I would like to add that Marlborough Public Library will be expanding its hours to Sunday, starting this fall, and it will coincide with the calendar year of the school.
Perfect.
So, there's more opportunities to go on the weekend. So, that was approved in the budget this year, thanks to city council. It was a need just because of the school libraries, and so it's more access on that Sunday, so, starting this fall. So, more opportunities to get those books.
Thank you.
Yeah. Taylor, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Ooh, he rises. Are you Patrick tonight?
I am.
You can tell.
Hello, everyone. My name is Atul Madhur and I'm gonna be presenting on behalf of Patrick, the senior representative. Hello, everybody. I am Patrick Havlin, senior student advisory committee member. This evening, I would like to talk to you all about my reflection of my time here at the MPS district. As I stand here today, I'm filled with a mix of emotions, gratitude, nostalgia, and a touch of disbelief that this chapter in my life is truly coming to a close. My time at Marlborough Public Schools has been nothing short of transformative. The hallways I've walked, classrooms I've learned in, and the lunch tables I've socialized now have shaped who I am more than they can ever imagine when I first walked through the doors years ago. From our first nervous introduction to elementary school, to our friendships, lessons, and the experiences we've gathered through middle school, high school, and every step of the journey has left a mark. I've had teachers who didn't just teach math or English or science, but taught resilience, curiosity, and kindness. They believed in us when we didn't just believe in ourselves, and I'll always carry their lessons with me. I've also been lucky enough to grow alongside classmates who've become teammates, lab partners, and lifelong friends. We've changed, we've cheered on each other through games, performances, tests, and personal struggles. Together, we've learned that community is more than just a word, but it's a feeling, a bond that ties us together no matter where we go next. Marlborough is more than just a town on a map, it's been our foundation, as well as many other things as we head off in different directions. We'll have this common ground. I'm proud of where I come from, and I'm proud of all my classmates and how far we've come. Thank you to every teacher, friend, coach, counselor, staff member, who've been part of this journey, and thank you for believing in us and pushing us to do our best. The road ahead is wide but open, and Marlborough will always be a part of that story. Thank you.
Thanks, Atul.
Thank you.
All right. Last one, I promise. Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Klein, for real. And as many of you know, I serve as student council advisor at Marlborough High School, which includes student advisory committee. I have a quick announcement, which most of you probably already know, but I did wanna say a few things, just to shine a little light on the independence and interdependence of this particular group. All right, so, as you know, their goal, the goal of their role is to provide the authentic student perspective for the school committee. They gather student perspectives, talk to stakeholders, both peers and adults, and write their own presentations, and I do my best to allow them that space, to do that without my bias, and only at their request do I offer suggestions at any point in their process. Because I don't require them to turn in their presentations to me beforehand, they devise their own process. When they want feedback or someone to read over their words, they ask their peers, they ask each other, and of course, they ask Atul. And this has been happening for years. A big thank you to Atul's predecessors, Jessica Rosenzweig and Risha Kandaria. I am proud of the trust and support they've built over the years, and it's truly the student voice that you're hearing. Finally, my official announcement, the student representative for next year is going to be exactly who it's been this year. No need for a new nameplate. Atul Madhur will continue to serve as student representative to school committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Klein.
All righty, anything else? All righty, let's move on.
Great, thank you.
To the Marlborough High School Robotics Team.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joanne Mahoney, retired science teacher from the middle school and the director of robotics at the middle school, and I check in with the high school team when Kyle allows me to. We have just, as you know, most of you know, we have just come back from Dallas, Texas. Our robotics teams went to the world competition and they were amazing. The whole program was amazing, and we thank you all for your support, for letting us go. Our team, sitting here, we have Solucina Madhur, Atul's mother. We have Paul Meeger, who is.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Klein.
All righty. Anything else? All righty, let's move on. To the Marlboro High School robotics team.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joanne Mahoney, retired science teacher from the middle school and the director of robotics at the middle school. And I check in with the high school team when Kyle allows me to. We have just, as you know, most of you know, we have just come back from Dallas, Texas. Our robotics teams went to the Worlds competition, and they were amazing. The whole program was amazing, and we thank you all for your support, for letting us go. Our team, sitting here, we have Solucina Madhur, Atul's mother. We have Paul Meeger, who is Kyle's mother. And we have Jennifer Powell, who is Betsy's mother. And I went and supported Andy.
I'm Kyle Major. I am the coach and advisor of the Marlboro High School robotics program. I also helped start it with some friends of mine a long time ago. We hadn't made it to Worlds ever. This is the first time the program has gone. So I'd like to just give some stats on how well we actually did. So we competed with roughly 800 other teams from 53 different countries. We represented the New England district in one of the formats of competitions, which is Skills. We were the second best from that region. And we came in, what was it, like 53rd overall? Out of the roughly 400 of the 800 teams that actually did that format, we got our personal best at that competition, better than we've ever done. It was, I think, the smoothest run a robot has ever done, as far as I am aware. It went pretty much perfectly, other than a couple of chucks here and there. But it was a great opportunity, it was a super fun event. Our students did super, super well. So thanks for the opportunity for sending us. It was a ton of fun. We've put together a video with some photos from the event taken by my father, and also probably edited by him as well. I can provide some context here and there if anyone wishes to know afterwards. Please ask us questions about the event and anything you're curious about. We're happy to answer. You couldn't tell there were a lot of people. Just for a little bit of context, that clip and the other red clips are from Dome. It's the largest arena at the event. It's where they do finals and the opening ceremonies. It holds quite a lot of people, and is one of the loudest places I've ever been. A lot of teams put out maps, so people could put stars and markers from where they were actually from. There were wider maps, that's just the US one. There's a ton of people from New England. So this is a recording of our best skills run that I mentioned before. I gave you a little context on how the robot actually works, so you can actually see it in action. The goal for this format of the competition is to score as many points as you possibly can within a one-minute time limit. You start from a predetermined start point with a predetermined layout of the field itself. You got a lot of opportunities to do path planning. You could either do it as a driver run, where somebody actually controls the robot, or autonomous, where the robot does it itself. This run is autonomous, so the robot is going through a pre-print route with no input from the outside after we start it.
Yeah, so, I mean, for context, that's a 44-point autonomous skills run, so everything was fully controlled by the robot in that entire period. That took us the most amount of time. I know me, Andy, and Betsy spent hours on that field, just keep running that, you know. And I mentioned before the Create Award that we won, on our programming works and all that. That's what led us to this. The robot was fully self-correcting, so if we kicked it throughout the middle of the run, it should end up perfectly fine. It does mess up, and then it fixes itself, you can kind of see it in there. And that was the cool part, that was fully autonomous. So we got 44 points, each ring is one point, and the top ring is three. So you kind of have to play your game of how many top rings you get. Each corner goal is five points, so. Yeah, that's basically that run.
Next question.
Amazing.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
So, you're a junior, Betsy, you're a junior, right? So we're saying goodbye to Andy, who's going off to bigger robotics pastures, I think. And then do you have an heir apparent to fill Andy's spot?
Yeah, I think next year's team will be a little bit different. We have, we have a couple other, other teams in our high school group, so maybe combine a couple. And we'll figure it out over summer, especially as the new game, the new game came out at the big dome. They like, they unveiled it.
Have you started already?
So we're building our field, like the actual field stuff for next year's game, and then we're going to work on the robot over summer and start competing early next school year. But yeah, hopefully, it'll be a different team, it'll be a different dynamic, so hopefully Worlds again, though. It's in St. Louis this next.
St. Louis.
We're going to try and have a slightly larger team than what we did before.
Oh, right, 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 right.
So Atul started in sixth grade with our program at the middle school.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, some of the young kids over the years started with us, left, and then came back to the program as they got to the high school.
Sure.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Major, for your photographs.
Yes. Oh, I bet. All righty, well, thank you. All righty, we'll move on to the superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Mayor Christian. Once again, Marlboro High School graduation was a wonderful event. Dr. Riley and his team, Marlboro DPW facilities, and countless volunteers made this event possible. Thank you to everyone that made this day so special for our students and their families. Marlboro High School graduates are ready for college or careers. We have created multiple opportunities for students to graduate from Marlboro High School with college credits that will be available when our graduates attend higher education. Next year's, we will be expanding this for our students, and students will be able to graduate with 33 QCC credits. Or participate in many, multiple advanced placement courses that can also earn college credits. This year, there was a new tradition and the senior awards ceremony. And for the first time during that event, we were able to see where all of our graduates were attending school next year. But for our community, I have included in my report some information about our graduates and their postgraduate plans. 55% of our students will be attending a four-year college in the fall. That is an increase from last year. 18% are moving on to two-year college programs. 11% to technical schools. 9% are going directly into the employment. 4% into military, and 3% have identified that they are going for a gap year next year. As I mentioned, attached to my report, I have included the list of four-year colleges our Marlboro High School graduates plan to attend. And it's quite an impressive list as well. Masonic Teacher of the Year, I am pleased to announce that Goodnow Brothers School first-grade teacher, Tracy Capadonna, was recently selected as the 2025 Marlboro Public Schools Teacher of the Year by the United Brethren of Freemasons. Heather Rizley, Whitcomb School's sixth-grade math teacher, and Stephanie Wardman, Richards School's grade-one teacher, were named finalists as well. An award ceremony took place on Thursday, June 5th, at the Masonic Lodge. Congratulations to Tracy, Heather, and Stephanie. I had left a holder on my report for two superintendent updates. First of all, last night, Superintendent Del Faco and I attended the citywide PTO meeting. Two of the topics that we discussed, one that was discussed here tonight, was volunteers. And how they brainstorming different ways on increasing parent volunteers. They are struggling at all those schools. And so trying to send out the message that they are not looking, they know that everyone's working full-time. And so looking up if people are just willing to give a couple of hours at any point during the school year, they would really appreciate it. So they will be looking to do that. And the other thing that they were looking at is, as a first step for recruiting some additional volunteers, was making the PTO meetings more accessible to more of the community members. One of the strategies they're looking for is that the remote meetings have been pretty successful, but they're looking at ways to make sure that people are able to access and understand and participate in the meeting in multiple languages. Earlier today, I met with Chris Henry as well. He will be attending the next meeting, which is in August. And they will be looking, he's going to be doing some tests before that meeting, and looking to see if there are other platforms, other than a paid Zoom account, that can help with the translations. The second update was the Marlboro High School principal search. We have recently had three candidates visit the high school for four days. Superintendent Del Faco and I, earlier today, were looking at feedback on the candidates, and hopefully, we will have more information at the next meeting. Marlboro Public Schools Walking Zones update. Director of Finance and Operations Matt Wells and I met with Mayor Dumas, Chief Georgie, Commander Campbell, and Commissioner Ted Scott on Tuesday, June 3rd. We reviewed all school walking zones and identified locations for crossing guards, and we started brainstorming a plan on recruitment of crossing guards. And multiple departments will be working together to try to really actively recruit a number of crossing guards across the district. They identified primary locations for crossing guards, and then a few additional areas for crossing guards. Part of the issue with crossing guards is what happens when someone calls in sick. So if we are overstaffed, aren't able to reassign if a high-priority area does not have a crossing guard. The police department also shared the last job posting that they had for the position. It's rather long. We were looking at it earlier today. Some edits will have to be to make it more school-friendly, but you should see results of recruitment efforts across the city in multiple areas. And finally, the District Strategic Improvement Plan. The principals will be submitting their updated school improvement plans for the June 24th school committee meeting. In preparation for those submissions, I submitted the updated district plan tonight, attached to my report. I have embedded goals from both the Strategy for Improvement and the Student Opportunity Act Plan to the updated improvement plan. We have a lot of overlapping goals, so trying to move forward with one plan that the districts, each school can align their goals with. The goals focused on curriculum and instruction will be the same goal that you will see in every plan across the district as well. Thank you. Any questions?
I had a question. Oh, wasn't a question, it's a comment on one of the other additions to the senior awards night that I appreciated, was acknowledging the students that had completed the QCC programming. We had never done that before, and that was great. So you could really get a good sense of how many. And I can't remember who told me. Somebody told me that the one, oh, it was Liz De Horatius, told me that the ones that were acknowledged as completing the QCC program were students that had completed 12 credits or more. And they were acknowledged at that ceremony. But there were plenty of students who took one class, two classes, three classes. So it's a lot of students involved in it, which was really great to see. I appreciated that.
Quick question. And I apologize that I don't know this offhand, but I was seeing something in the paper about Patriot Ambulance and, I don't know whether it was retiring or changing.
I can tell you that. So Patriot Ambulance sold to Pride Star Trinity. So there's a change of ownership, but the service and everything else will remain the same.
So I guess that's where, that's what I kind of thought, but how's that going to affect with what we've been doing?
The program will continue. It might look a little bit different. I know one of the things that Dr. Riley was speaking to them about was the location for the courses that go with it. And that might be a change of location, but the EMT program is continuing.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I just, it was something that definitely caught me, and I was like, oh, gosh, that was.
The program will still continue.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
And I noticed that, I think there were four students that graduated, having completed it, one of whom is, actually has a job as an EMT.
Yeah, one of them was going to higher education, yes.
I think the other ones all were.
Yeah.
The ones that they identified as completing that were going to college. But one of them, one of them got a job as an EMT. So it's great to see.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, the Assistant Superintendent of Services and Equity, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you very much, Mayor Christian. So my report tonight on student attendance and chronic absenteeism is in the form of a PowerPoint. So as Superintendent Murphy had just talked about, the district improvement plan, one of the pieces of that, that addresses our goal of having a commitment of at least 60% of our students in each grade level meeting or exceeding projected growth targets, is focused on reducing students' absenteeism. And action step 1.3 is developing and implementing a K-12 plan to reduce student absent rates by 5%, which is, which was the entry finding. Two of the big components to that is establishing a team that creates a pre-K-12 plan to engage families and develop stronger school and family relationships with a focus on transition grades and new arrivals, as well as prioritizing outreach activities. And this will include. And this will include implementing strategies such as random phone calls to check in with families and create video series for new families on the importance of attendance. We had done a, a couple of years ago, we had done a presentation with our leadership group at the Leadership Retreat in August to focus on addressing our chronic absenteeism. And as part of that, I had reviewed with the leadership team the school committee policy on attendance, and that has the procedures about notifying parents of their child's absence if they have five or more unexcused absences within a year. And we had tightened up our procedures on notifying parents. We had talked about what was everybody doing and making sure that we were running reports through Aspen. As part of that, as part of the attendance policy, we have steps that are in place for students who are absent, and those include parent or guardian conferences, having future absences verified by a physician, restriction or prohibition of participation in extracurricular or intramural activities, field trips, or other activities, school-based consequences such as detentions, loss of course credit, grade retention, filing a failure to send your child to school with the courts, filing a CRA with the courts, getting a DCF involved, and also the potential of having the student and parent being reported to the truancy officer who may also file for truancy with the local courts. And a lot of our conversations over the last couple of years has been around moving away from the punitive measures to really having a more proactive approach and developing relationships with our families. So why student attendance is important, why we need to focus on that. Research has shown that students who attend school regularly are more likely to have success in school and careers. Research supports that, the connection between regular attendance and the student's personal, social, and emotional wellness and academic success. Students who are not present in school, they miss out on opportunities for social development, and they're often not able to make adequate academic progress. They miss, they may disengage from learning as they get further off track, and then may even, they're at risk for dropping out of school. The impact of missing school is significant. Massachusetts data has shown that 96% of students with high attendance in grade 10 graduate from high school in four years, while only 69% of students with low attendance in 10th grade graduate in four years. Attendance is also an important factor for students to reach four key educational milestones. That includes reading by third grade is assessed on the Grade 3 MCAS ELA test, meeting grade-level expectations is measured on the Grade 6 MCAS for ELA and math, passing all ninth-grade courses, and graduating from high school. And chronic absenteeism is defined as students who've missed 10% of their days enrolled within school. So it, over the course of a school year, that constitutes 18 or more days of missed school. And it doesn't matter why the student is, is missing school, and oftentimes we are engaged in conversations with parents on whether or not it's excused or not excused, and even excused absences is missed time of face-to-face instruction with a teacher. Some of the barriers to consistent student attendance that we have within our district is work or family responsibilities. Students could have chronic illnesses, a lack of stable housing, responding to, response to falling behind in schoolwork and/or failing courses. Students could have behavioral mental health needs, and there could be other personal or academic challenges. So it's really important for the school-based teams to really look at each individual student and dig into the cause of the absences to be able to develop a proactive plan to address it, to be able to get the student to come into school. So things that the district has done, prior to the 23-24 school year, our leadership team, along with lead teachers, participated in a student attendance workshop where we went through the state regulations, the school committee policy. We reviewed procedures for the parent notification. We also, from that workshop, we were the priority of establishing relationships and partnerships with parents. Teachers began using talking points to reach out to parents when students were absent, and that was with the emphasis on, you know, reaching out to the parent and the child to say, "We missed you in school. Is there anything that we can do to support you? I hope your child's okay." And it's really coming from developing that relationship with the parents and the student. Our Registration and Parent Outreach Center, along with the district wraparound service coordinators, have started to hold monthly Welcome to Marlboro Parent Workshops for families new to the district, and as part of that, the importance of student attendance at school is included as part of the workshop. Also during the 23-24 school year, grant-funded re-engagement coaches worked with groups of chronically absent high school students. The number of high school students identified as chronically absent decreased by 9.5% from 42%, 42.7% in 2022, 23 to 33.2% last year. Granted, it's still, you know, over a third of our students are still identified as being chronically absent, but we're trending in the right direction, and 9.5% is a really significant decrease. Then during the 23-24, in the 24-25 school years, grant-funded attendance academies have run during vacation weeks and Saturdays for students to make up missed days of school. Also, each school has established a school-based student attendance team that meets regularly to review student attendance and identify students requiring support. This year, we've developed a district-level attendance team that I lead, and we have a representative from each school's attendance team that participates, as well as the supervisor of SEL, the supervisor of Health Services, supervisor of Guidance, the director of Alt Ed, and the district attendance officer. During this first year of implementation, we were able to complete a multi-tiered system of support for student absences that was developed to use across all the schools. We developed a school refusal assessment scale that could be used in collaboration with parents to identify barriers unique to each student. An Attendance Behavioral Intervention Plan template was developed for schools to be able to use with individual students, and those school-based attendance teams utilize that form for students that they've identified. We have a district attendance intervention workflow that was developed to provide consistency among schools, and providing supportive interventions is a first step of addressing chronic absenteeism versus punitive measures. We began reviewing district and school attendance data to identify patterns or trends, and we have discussed recommendations of revisions for the student attendance policy to bring forward to the school committee for consideration. The district-level attendance team will continue to meet regularly going into the next year to examine attendance data by school and student to identify trends for individual students, as well as patterns for specific student groups, such as by race, students with disabilities, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, or English learners. And overall, I provided to you an end-of-year data for '23, end-of-year data for '24, and what we have so far for March of 2025. We have the attendance rates, the attendance rate for each of those three years, which is something we want to see to trend upwards, and that is, continues to improve each year. The number of absences from '23 to '24, and then for March '25, you can see the average number of absences per student has decreased. And the trends of the percent of students with chronic absenteeism and chronically absent for 10% and 20% has, has overall declined. The March of 2025, that is, that's based on 10% of the total days up to that point. And with April and May, the, with added additional school days, those trends, the percentages of chronic, students who are chronically absent has gone down through the rest of the school year. So we do anticipate that the percent of students who are absent 10 or more days and the chronically absent 10 and 20% for the end-of-year for 2025 will be significantly lower than what's there for March 1st data. And then while we've, we have achieved the benchmark of reducing the student absent rate by 5% from '23 to '24, and we do anticipate another decrease of 5% from '24 to '25, there's still a great deal of work to do. There's still a significant number of students who are chronically absent, and we are expecting to continue implementation of consistent systems of support to address student absenteeism, and that we expect our student attendance to continue to improve, which will then improve our student outcomes in the areas of social-emotional skills, our achievement, and graduation rates.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Yes?
Couple things. Just please note that for future, if you can change it from, you have the number for the policy as opposed to the letter. Since we've made that adjustment, it would be great to make sure that this moves forward with anything that goes out that has the J.I., which is, you know, the new, the new thing, if you will.
Thank you.
I guess with all of this, you know, I look at some of the attendance conversation, and I think back when, you know, the pandemic hit, and it was, you know, trying to make sure that people weren't coming to school to potentially cause issues, you know? And I think that while this is necessary now, I think it's also a bit of a mind shift change as to where we were trying to make sure that people weren't coming into school and spreading potential issues. And I think it, there's probably still more of an education that needs to come into play. You know, we're talking about some of the language barriers. I would say also some of the cultural differences, and it's, it's all part of like an education around, you know, kind of being a smart and kind and helpful human, because in some cases, we may have people that are chronically being absent for other issues, but some could just be a matter of, you know, being sick, and then they're thinking they're doing the right thing. So I think that, as we've talked about before, we probably need to peel it back with the attendance information. I'm hoping that it is allowing for it to break apart as to they arrived late, you know, or they actually reported being sick, or whatever it is, so that we can peel it apart with the data.
Absolutely. Having Chrissy Harrington, our supervisor of Health Services, as part of the district team, attendance team, has been really helpful because we've had those conversations in that group, and she's been working with the nurses as far as like messaging out to parents about when should you keep your child home versus when you, they should maybe come into school? Especially when we have students who are, you know, upwards of 25, 30, 40, 50 absences, that's where it's, you know, you know, parents saying, well, they don't feel well. We might dig into, and it might be that they don't have access to healthcare, and we have, the steps there would be that we're following up with our wraparound service providers to get them health insurance and access to healthcare, because maybe there is a chronic illness that's going on that's not being addressed because they're not able to see the doctor. But it's also like, when is it sniffles and allergies and okay to come into school?
Right. And some of it then goes down the line of when it becomes, say, tied to the social-emotional aspect, where sometimes if people have had chronic absences, and then it becomes worse because there's more anxiety because you've missed so much, and then how do you feel like you can dig out of it? And how are we able to best support them on finding a path and knowing that they can find a path back? Because that's, sometimes it's not so easy to figure that out.
Absolutely.
So, okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on. Acceptance of minutes. Minutes of the April 29th, 2025 executive session approved at the May 27, 2025 executive session to be released.
Move to approve.
So if we could just, the date is not correct. It should say April 29th, 2025, not 2005.
Yes.
So just make that motion to amend them and accept the minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Move to, did we, yeah, we have to first accept them and then move to release them.
As long as they're amended.
As long as they're amended.
So did you make that motion?
I made a motion to accept the amended minutes of April 29th, 2025.
Executed. Questions, comments, concerns about the amended minutes with the date change? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
And I make a motion to release, well, they're public now, so they are sort of released, but move to release.
On the table and seconded, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Minutes of the May 13th, 2025 executive session approved at the May 27, 2025 executive session to be released.
Move to approve, May 13th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Motions on the table and seconded, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Motion to release the May 13th, 2025 minutes.
Thank you. Motion on the table and seconded to have them released. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on. Public comment. There is nobody here, so we will not do public comments. Save some breath. Moving on. Action items and reports. Introduction of the incoming interim superintendent, Mr. Jason DeFalco.
Hello.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. It has been amazing being here tonight. The student, action, or I'm not sure if I'm going to get it right, student advisory committees. I was speaking with a couple of the students on their way out was incredible. I haven't seen that before. It was so great to hear them bring, you know, different challenges and issues and, to the floor to, you know, to make the school committee aware and administration aware. I thought that was incredible. And it was kind of full circle for me to come back and hear the robotics team present because I actually watched their meeting before they went. So that was actually very cool to see, you know, the video and to hear about their successes. And just a big thank you to all the students that were here tonight, but also to the advisors and to families. It was great to see a full crowd. Very cool to, to be able to kind of absorb and take this in. But it also squares with the transition process that poor Mary has had to work with me through the past month. Mary's been incredible. The whole team has, frankly. I've had an opportunity to spend a lot of time in Marlboro. Like the school committee probably remembers, we had some discussions around me wanting to make sure that July 1st didn't feel like July 1st, and I think we're, we're getting there, which is really great. I've had a chance to visit all of our schools. The principals introduced me to, I feel like, every classroom in every building, even though I kept saying, "Don't interrupt the instruction that was going on." It was hard not to. I got a lot of hugs from the kids, which was really great, although the stranger danger thing, I guess, didn't really work because, you know, they don't know who I am. But it was really, it was really incredible. I commented to Mary a few times and also to the union leadership, who had a chance to meet the unit A president and vice president today. The schools are very warm. They're very warm places, very strong foundation of good instruction. Kids really focused on their learning. There's definitely a sense of purpose that you could feel from the, you know, early childhood center here all the way through the high school. That was really awesome to experience. And it's the end of the year, right? So like I was there, I think, the last Friday in Maine, the first Monday of this month, and people are, you know, usually burnt out and kind of tired and all the things. They were great. I mean, I'm sure all those things were in place, and people were tired. They were great. I mean, I'm sure all those things were in place, and people were tired and all of that. But really, the instruction was great. The kids were amazing. It was a really, just really powerful experience. Also, I've had a chance to meet with our central office leaders, which is really good conversations to get a sense of kind of what's been going on and the direction the work is moving in. I was able to meet with the leadership team as a whole. And I think I may have shared with some of you, the principal leadership here is incredibly strong. And really getting a sense of, of how our building leaders have kind of come together around their roadmap and the direction in which they're moving their schools, both individually, but collectively as a team, is, is quite remarkable. And I would say not as common as you might think it should be. So that's a really big testament to our leadership at every level. The citywide PTO meeting was great. It was really good to hear directly from our parents. And it was interesting to hear some of the kind of overlapping, we talked about book fairs, and we talked about some of the challenges that the PTOs are having across the city to kind of bring community together. But we also brainstormed some different ideas, and just kind of did some idea sharing around where, you know, we could go collectively as a larger team. So, I mean, you know, overall, having a chance to just engage in the Marlboro Public School process has been really, really impactful. Also, having had a chance to sit in on some of the administrative interviews and, you know, listening to the students and listening to some of their questions and hearing the things that are important to them, particularly at the high school level, has been really, has been really powerful as well. So, you know, at, at this point, I, I'm just, I was really excited before. I think the school committee knows that. But after spending so much time here, I really cannot wait to start. And I will be here July 1st, ready to roll on that Tuesday. And just really excited to partner with everybody that's here and to our, our family and our school community members that I haven't had a chance to meet with yet. Very excited about that. And really excited to just roll up the sleeves and get to work. So, thanks.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
You, you have hit the ground running, and we appreciate that. So, yes. All righty. Well, welcome, welcome aboard, even though it's, feels like a forever that we've had the, had the interview process. Excellent. All righty. So we'll move on. The memorandum of understanding between Marlboro School Committee and the Cafeteria Employees, SEIU Local 888.
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Motion on the table to approve the MOU. Any questions, comments, and concerns? It is seconded. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the acceptance of donations and gifts. So we have the O'Connor's portraiture for the Gunnell Brothers Elementary for $1,843.53, as well as Rich Elementary for $1,086.13.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the donation? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Reports of school committee subcommittees. Yes, Ms. Henderson?
Thank you. Wanted to thank you all for moving forward on a number of the policies in my absence at the last meeting, so thank you so much on that. And we are going to have a quick policy subcommittee meeting on Friday morning, so that will get posted tomorrow morning, so that we meet our, our time period. It's going to be an online opportunity because we are reviewing, which we've been talking about for a while. We just need to have a, a formal vote so that we can move it forward as the animals in schools policy. Just our timing has been two of us meeting and two of us meeting, so we'll do that on Friday morning and then get that to you.
Riveting, animals in schools.
It's, it is riveting. It's exciting.
Yeah, I bet.
Chicks in schools.
Bring back the chicks.
Any other reports of school committee subcommittee? Seeing none? Okay. Members forum. Yes?
So I just wanted to say, I spent the time after getting home from my vacation watching not only last meeting, but graduation. And glad to see you all made it through with the wind.
Oh, my goodness.
Boy, did I feel bad when Andy Zing's, Andy Zing's paper went flying, and I was like, "Oh, the poor kid." But, but, you know, you guys, it was hard missing graduation. I missed you all immensely. And, no, I did ask. I, I watched some of it overseas. But you guys did a great job, and, and I just, it, every single graduation, you know, I tear up watching, you know, some people that I've had the chance to get to know a little bit more than others. But watching everyone pull together, it's just always amazing. And it's not an easy program to pull together. And I appreciated the acknowledgements. Mary, you know, thank you for taking the time on trying to do the trilingual. You know, I give you a lot of kudos on trying it. I would have a major problem, so good for you. And thank you for always trying to make people feel included and inclusive. I think that's great, and I love that about you and about Marlboro. And I appreciated the words that Dan got to say, especially acknowledging Sean Mahoney and Heidi Matthews, and two amazing members of this community. And we're so very fortunate to have them and this amazing community and support. And I also wanted to acknowledge that I had the chance of watching the meeting that I missed. And thank you to Heidi Matthews for the many, many years that she took on the role of secretary. Not an easy job, as you even noted in our executive session minutes, relative to sometimes people finding concerns that they bring to open meeting law violations that they want to bring up. And I just want to say, I appreciate the effort that she has continued to put in for years. And I appreciate that Ms. Ryan is going to help us in stepping up in that role. It's all on us as a team, and I really consider that this is a team. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have reviewed and signed the warrant.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would just like to add that yesterday, we had the awards for the rest of the high school students, other than seniors. Thank you. And I would just like to say thank you for everyone who came. I know it's in the morning this year, so it was a little bit taking time out of the day. So thank you to everyone for coming, and thanks for the opportunity for having it. You know, a little bit different, but it's definitely a nice, with the whole school watching, you know? Great opportunity and great experience, so.
Thank you.
Packed crowd, yeah. Well, I was going to acknowledge that day and to congratulate you on your basket full of wins, including the Mary Lou Vanzini Award, which is a really special award.
She's an icon.
It's an honor.
She's an icon. And the fact that you will be with us again next year.
Of course, yes.
Very excited.
Thank you.
Oh, and I did put in a request for skirting for you. It has apparently not arrived, but I have put in the request.
Thank you.
And a reminder, Friday is your deadline for the superintendent evaluation, so get cracking. Yeah, this Friday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for members forum?
Well, I'd just like to say that I was privileged at the graduation to sit in with the band this year.
Yes.
It was an interesting experience in the wind. Before the last number started, Andy's paper took off, and my first piece of music went flying as soon as Jimmy put his hands down to start the music. So I just sat there for half a song pretending I knew what I was doing. Thank God we have very smart people like Ally sitting next to me who was playing all the right music. And I knew when to come in because I was watching her carefully. I was waiting for Tool to fall down because he was standing up so long at the award yesterday. I thought he was gonna have old man's legs by the time we got to sit down because he was getting every award that he deserved so well. I sat on the school committee Mrs. Vanzini years ago, and very special to me that somebody that I know got Mrs. Vanzini's award as well.
Thank you. It's an honor, yes. Seriously.
Her daughter's the one who won the Teacher of the Year, so.
That is true. Mrs. Vanzini's daughter is Tracy Capadonna, who won the Teacher of the Year. Yeah.
Full circle.
Full circle. That is true. Yeah.
If there's nothing else.
Okay, move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns about adjourning? Seeing none, all in favor? All righty, approved. We are adjourned at 8:50. Have a great night.